Good morning, Alcon. Convened this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is February 14th. Welcome to Harris Hall. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. We'll start today with the joint meeting of the Board of Health and County Commissioners, who are now convened. Good morning, Mr. Mokariski.
Good morning.
Any adjustments to the agenda this morning?
None, that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
To the board, any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along to public comments. Today, we will take public comments both on Tobacco 21 and on the general public comment section. We're now opening the general public comment session. We'll also, once the regular board meeting convenes, we'll have a public comment session then, in case you missed the first session today. So today, we have Kyra Carroll.
You might ask, legal counsel, or maybe you've already confirmed, but technically, it is a public hearing today, so I don't know if you need to read the order to take public comments on it.
We'll—thank you, Mr. Commissioner. We will have a public hearing separate to this. That will be item five, the second reading, a public hearing on 1701 on the agenda. So this is item number two, general public comments.
Yeah, I would confirm all of that, just to let speakers know that they can speak generally about whatever they want, within reason, of course, and then if they have issues relating to the tobacco regulations, they should wait for the hearing to get those into that record.
And the sign-up sheet for the Tobacco 21 public hearing is still active at the back of the room. So if you wish to sign up, you can testify in both, the general public and the Tobacco 21. But if you're testifying to Tobacco 21, please reserve your comments for the second, the actual public hearing today. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So first, on the general public comment, we have Kyra Carroll, who will be followed by Carol Shearer. And as you step to the mic, Ms. Carroll, I'll remind you, you have three minutes to speak, at the end of which you hear a signal, at which point I'll ask you to include your statement.
Thank you. My name is Kyra Carroll. I live at 2285 East 29th Avenue, just outside of the city limits of Eugene. I'm a speech and language pathologist. And about 16 years ago, I was working in Eugene, hearing a speech, I was asked to evaluate a little boy, five years old, for stuttering, which I've done before. And it was a very interesting case, which has really tugged at my heart ever since. This little boy was from Guatemala. He and his family were victims of torture. Actually, his father was the one who was really victimized. And this little boy watched the soldiers come and take his father, beat him and take him away, and never see him again. This little boy, five years old, was trilingual. He spoke Hakaltek, which is a native language in Guatemala. And his grandmother spoke only Hakaltek. His family all spoke Spanish. It's a lingua franca, and it's used in most of Latin America. We all know that. He'd only been in the United States for about a month when I met him, and he was already speaking English. And, you know, we need people like that, a bright little boy, five years old, trilingual, right? Well, so I was invited, asked to evaluate his stuttering. Well, I started talking with him in English, and he doesn't stutter at all. Kind of like, well, this is kind of weird. And so I started talking with him in Spanish. He mostly avoided it, and he started talking in Hakaltek to his grandma. And I asked his grandma, I said, well, if he's stuttering, I can't tell. And she says, no, he doesn't stutter in Hakaltek. Finally, I got him to speak in Spanish. He stuttered badly, badly in Spanish. I've worked with multilingual people before, both Portuguese, Spanish-speaking people. I've never seen a person who didn't stutter in both languages, but this kid did. Spanish was the language of the people who beat his father in front of him and took his father away. And let's not forget that our country supported that military regime, okay? Let's not forget that. That little boy is scarred for life. How many of you have had anything like that ever in your lifetime, or can even imagine it, having your father beaten in front of you? Just think back on your father or your mother, okay? I don't know what happened to that little boy. He's now 21, but I hope he has good memories of the United States. When I was an undergraduate, my undergraduate major was German. And I have been to the gas chambers of Dachau. I've also met German people who were so ashamed of their country's heritage that they would not even admit that Dachau existed, that people had been murdered there. You know, I have Jewish friend who says, how could you study German? How could you study German? And I have to say, you know, I don't know, but I know that if we don't pay attention to history, we're going to forget it. We're not going to forget it, okay? And I just—I do want to say that I think now, as our children are being followed in some places in the United States, we're coming back to that same sort of thing.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Yes. I don't want us to be ashamed, like those German people were.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Carol Shearer, followed by David Walken.
Well, I don't know Ms. Carroll, who just spoke, but I'm going to follow on her words, her concerns. I'm going to speak about the heart, which is what she was also talking about, which is appropriate today. I wish I would have worn red. I didn't even think about that. I'm concerned about our hearts. I'm concerned about the hearts of the children, the grandchildren, your children, and your grandchildren. I'm reminded about this because a friend of mine was recently talking very fondly and strongly about her grandmother, how she was so proud of how she stood strong against the Nazis, took great risk. And my friend has a very good heart. She loves deeply. She's a very strong person. And I think that that was a contributing factor, because she could look about what her family stood for. I'm concerned about what the people here will feel about how it is that we're going to stand or not stand. I'm concerned about years from now, because this is historical, how your children, your grandchildren, your great nieces and nephews are going to look at their grandparents, their grandfathers, and wonder if they did everything they could, given the power that they have as an elected official. I look back on the history of racism here in this area, and it makes me feel bad. It does affect my heart. I feel less good about myself. And you are in a position of power. Decades from now, people are going to wonder—the younger people today are going to be older, and they will wonder. And their children will wonder, what did you do? Did you do everything that you could? Did you take risks? Did you care? Were you strong? Were you courageous? The people are watching. The generations that follow are going to know, because indeed, this is a historical time, just like Ms. Carroll just said. And I think we need to care about how we are affecting future generations, not just ourselves. And it's not about how much power you have. It's not about the votes that you get. It's not about the money that you have. It's not going to mean anything, because your legacy will be affected by decisions that you make just right now. That's the important part of what it is that you are elected to do, to stand strong for the people. And not just the people today, but the people that are going to follow. So please stand strong. Please have an inclusive ordinance that is going to protect immigrants, undocumented immigrants, and people that live here, because our hearts depend on it.
Thank you. Next is David Walken, followed by Alice Warner.
Morning. Thank you. I'm from Eugene. I'm a faculty librarian at the University of Oregon, and I'm on the executive council of United Academics, the union of over 1,700 faculty at the University of Oregon. We've endorsed the sanctuary ordinance in Eugene. We supported strong sanctuary policies that the U of O passed back in November. And we would likewise urge the Lang County Commissioners to adopt similar, strong sanctuary policies at the county level. Many of our members, their students and their families are international, our folks are international, come from other countries, or who have family members who are international. These members of ours, students of ours, are feeling threatened in our current political climate, worry for themselves and their loved ones. And many recognize that these divisions that we often see between who is considered the righteous, or legal, or illegal, or that kind of thing, in practice, are very thin, those divisions, and often do not exist when it comes down to actual harassment arrests and targeting by our federal government. This past week, around the country, we've seen mass roundups of immigrants, many of them here illegally, many of them—many of them just picked up as what Customs and Border Patrol or Immigration and Customs Enforcement likes to call collateral targets. Statewide, we do have policies supporting sanctuary. We do have a governor who's come out very strongly in favor of those policies. But we have to recognize that those policies could change. They are being questioned. They are being threatened. We do see already people working to have them repealed. So we can't just assume that Lang County will be safe because the state government is on this side. We need to be fighting this on every level. Right now, I really would like to see the Lang County come together against a xenophobic term we're seeing across this country, and work together to protect all members of our community. Remember that our international community's contributions to our economy and to our culture are a part of what makes Lang County a unique place that many of us feel proud to come from. It's for this measure, again, that I'd like to say, please write, adopt, and enforce a strong sanctuary policy within Lang County. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker we have signed up is Alice Warner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a lawyer and a teacher, and I live on Orchard Street in Eugene. Every time the county asks for a levy, the issue is, will the county use my money wisely? The last time the county asked for levy for the jail, the question was, would the sheriff get results with that levy money? It was all about local law enforcement. But now it's 2017. I believe that levy could be needed, but I'm unsure, and here's why. I don't know, will the money in the jail be used by the federal government to carry out mass deportations, to jail people whose only violation of law is lack of valid immigration documents? Will it be used to jail people as policies stood in World War II, who looked like someone who might be an enemy of the state? Not an enemy of the state, but someone who looked like it, so anyone of race or color that put them in suspicion? Will it be used by the federal government to incarcerate people of Muslim faith or Jewish faith? And I don't say that to throw around the Nazi card. I say that because it is a fact that we have a person who's an avowed white supremacist on the National Security Council. So how does the county build trust so that people will know that that levy money will be spent for local law enforcement and for the results that were so good in the last levy? It's by actions, not words. Last time I came, I heard many of you say—and it filled my heart with happiness—to say that the county is a hate-free county. But words don't build trust. It's actions. So passing county-wide legislation that says that you will separate local law enforcement from federal law enforcement, that you will protect immigrants, people of color, races, and origins who might be suspected of being immigrants, that's the action that needs to happen. Now, why? Why right now? You could wait for the committee. You have a new committee. The committee's wonderful. You could wait. But the problem is, the federal government isn't waiting. The federal government is acting by executive order. Those orders take effect immediately. They're going through without legal review. It's a chaotic situation. So county employees and sheriff employees need to know, what does this county want to have happen? Not what does the governor want to have happen, but what does my boss want? What does my community want? I believe that committee is full of people who are up to speed, that you've chosen widely, and I think you could take a very quick poll. Does anybody on this committee think it would be a bad idea for the commission to act right away? Would any on this committee feel that that was disrespectful of this new committee? I think the committee would be happy to have you act quickly, and you could ask them. Why pass legislation now? Because you need to build trust for the levy, and you need to bring down the level of fear in your locality. And I'll just add, because I heard the bell, I think it's very important for all of our mental health—and one of the earlier speakers said it better than I will—not to look back at what we could have done more quickly and more thoroughly, because feeling later that we acted in a bureaucratic way won't make us feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. That concludes the list of people signed up. Would anyone in the audience wish to address the Board of County Commissioners on the general topics at this point in time? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and remember you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Susan Fanner, and I'm here on behalf of the Public Health Advisory Committee. I'm just going to read for the record the letter that we sent to you in support of the Tobacco 21 ordinance.
Ms. Fanner?
Yes.
May I ask you to—we have a public hearing on Tobacco 21, which will be coming as item five on the agenda.
Okay.
And you'll have an opportunity to address specifically Tobacco 21 at that point in time. You certainly can address—
Very good.
—other issues at this point in time and take your time.
Nope. I'll wait.
Then I will—
Thank you very kindly.
The sign-up sheet is still active in the back of the room.
Thank you, Chair.
So please sign up. Thank you very much. Would anyone wish to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding general issues? We will have an opportunity on Tobacco 21 as item five on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public comments, excuse me. Thank you. Two very different things. And open discussion to the Board of County Commissioners. Response or remonstrance? Commissioner Stewart.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I want to thank the folks that have spoke about their concerns about the state of the county and well-being of individuals. I was wondering if the administrator might, in the future agenda, have the sheriff come and speak to us, as he's the chief law enforcement individual that works with the federal government, give us an understanding of what's actually taken place today with the change, and bring us up to speed on what's—what his responsibilities and how he's, you know, performing his duties. Appreciate it if we have support to do that.
And we will remind that request during the request of the agenda team. We'll remind the board of that request during the item later in the agenda, which is a request. But Commissioner Stewart, thank you very much.
I'd just add to that, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Stewart, the sheriff and—I believe the district attorney. I know the sheriff will be at the March 1st Equity and Access Board meeting at 5:30 PM. That's the next meeting of our Equity and Access Board, and the sheriff will address that committee at that time on March 1st. And I think our next board meeting after today is March 7th. So I think it certainly—if the sheriff is available, it'd be appropriate for us to have an item for him to address the board at that time.
And he has—publicly came out with a statement that is accessible, I believe, on our website, if folks want to see how he's addressed this issue publicly.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. And March 1st is a Wednesday, as I recall. Thank you very much. Commissioner Sorensen.
Well, I just want to thank everyone who came for the public comment today to give us some insights on some of the important issues facing the community. And I think, for me, these raids that we've been hearing about in the national news, and the speed at which this new national administration is violating the Constitution. Fortunately, we do have courts to hear some of the most egregious violations. And I'm really happy to see the state of Washington move ahead with challenging the president's executive order. And I really appreciate those of you who came today to remind us that resisting this threat to our country is something that's going on at the dinner table, at the community meeting, at the city, at the county, at the state, and of course, at the national level. So it's something that we can all do something about, whether it's on a personal level of stepping in when you see bullying, or you see people who are being taken advantage of, or whether it's at the government level, where we can do something. And I think it's a great idea to think about asking our sheriff and district attorney and other people involved in enforcement of our community's laws. And I think it's a great suggestion to inquire about that before the voters get to vote in the spring on the levy and making sure that we're in full compliance with Oregon law and separating enforcement of federal immigration law from what we do. And I also think it's great to take a hard look at what we're doing on this board to foster a more inclusive community and one that is free from the kind of harm that we're seeing being inflicted on some of the people who live in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. So I appreciate Commissioner Stewart pointing out the sheriff's statement on our website. I would also like to point people to the Oregon State Sheriff's Association has a statement about the executive order on the front page of their website. Very easy to reach, oregonsheriffs.org, or just Google Oregon State Sheriff's Association, or something close to that, and you'll probably find it. But it goes into detail about what sheriff's departments are and aren't allowed to do. And particularly, it notes that Oregon jails do not honor requests by ICE to detain persons past their local release date, because doing so is in violation of the person's rights and subjects the jail to serious civil liability. It also talks about the only way they'll hold a person if there is a signed federal warrant by a magistrate. So in addition to that, sheriffs are not charged with enforcing federal law. In fact, they can't. They're not licensed to, just as federal agents can't enforce local law. And there's a—to listen to a good discussion of this. I had the sheriff on my internet radio show on February 1st. And if you Google either KRBN or Bo's Nose, and that's spelt with a Z on the nose, the February 1st show, he was my guest. And in the last 20 minutes of the show, we specifically talked about the issue of dealing with ICE and the jail, and how he interacts. And he was very specific about the fact that he won't even try and have a warm handoff as somebody leaves the jail. If ICE wanted somebody, they have to be there at the moment they actually leave the jail, or something like that. You know, he is—not funded to enforce federal law, or even licensed to enforce federal law. So I hope that people understand that funding the jail does not fund any ICE activities. And there's a clear separation there. You know, obviously, if you look at my last name, you know, I'm relatives, you know, went through Ellis Island. I have immigrants in my past. My father-in-law liberated one of the first concentration camps in Germany, his unit of the Texas 36th Division, 134th Regiment. Actually, was one of the very first ones that Eisenhower actually went to visit while he was there, because it was that big of a surprise to the High Command. And he actually witnessed Eisenhower crying. So I fully appreciate the concerns about this. But I hope people understand that our sheriff's department is not licensed and does not actively participate in the enforcement of federal law.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Ms. Mokariski, a couple of things I'm going to add. And one is regarding the public testimony today centered mainly on inclusion and equity and access. And I met—the board—the Equity and Access Board met for the first time on February 1st. And I had a chance to sit in the back of the room for that meeting. And the second meeting is on March 1st. The inaugural meeting, or the first meeting of the Equity and Access Board, was exactly what people have described here, is a number of people who are very well-prepared to do their work in a very deliberative fashion. And much of the work that needs to be done by the Equity and Access Board is deliberative, and it's exploring options and finding ways to move forward with issues without causing other issues that may surround it. That's kind of a broad way of looking at it. But the board is taking its role very, very seriously. And I'm going to make just a couple of quotes from folks on the board, which does actually corroborate the statements made by the folks here today. The people on the board are well-prepared for the work. Karen Sacks said, "We have a lot of great people in our community, saying a lot of great things about equity and access. But now is the time for action." And that was said on February 1st, and the board moves forward on March 1st. Carrie Radley said, "My hope is that in the future, this board does not need to be here." She followed it with that, "I don't think that's going to be the case." And I paraphrased that a little bit. That wasn't the exact quote, the second part. One gentleman said, "To be honest, I'm clueless about the things that we have to do. I disagree with what he said." He was not clueless, but what he meant was that this board has a number of unanswered questions as they move forward with the very deliberative work that they're going to be doing. And the board takes its role very, very seriously. And while some things can be done with relatively little preparation, very little foresight, some things do need a deliberative process in order to make certain that we're not raising other obstacles that potentially could be greater than the obstacles that we're trying to overcome by moving forward with legislation. So I'm looking forward to the work of the board, Mr. Mokariski, that you have assembled, the board that reports to you, and you report that board's findings to us, the Board of County Commissioners. I'm excited about it. I think the people in this room are very excited about it. And we are moving forward in a positive fashion. And it's not slow. Now, to get to this point, it took us a couple of years. But now the board's started to meet. They are—it's a board of action, and will prescribe action. Once again, I'm very excited. Now, something that I will reiterate what Commissioner Sorensen was saying, and that is, action can be taken by any individual at any time regarding stepping in, if you see bullying, or if you see something that is inequitable happening. And I don't just mean on the streets. I mean in halls, wherever it may be, if you see people being put down or bullied, whether it's for LGBTQ issues, whether it's for racial issues, whether it's for language issues, whatever it may be, whether it's women, whether it's men, whether it's children, bullying is just not acceptable. women, whether it's men, whether it's children, bullying is just not acceptable. Now, we do seem to have a new breed or a newly emerged set of bullies in our community. We see it a little bit more perhaps nationwide, but we have a new set of bullies. And it's time for everybody who hates that, who does not like that, who hates the fact that people don't understand this is a hate-free zone. People who, if you can't abide that, do your job and step in. I'm not asking people to put themselves in harm's way, that's your own personal decision, but bullying is not okay. We're not going to accept it. I'm not going to accept it, and it really is something that we each, as individuals, can take action on. So thank you very much for your testimony today. We'll move forward with a meeting, barring any further discussion from the Board of County Commissioners. Then we'll move along, Mr. Mokracy, with item 5 on our Health, Joint Board of Health, Board of Commissioners meeting, which is a second reading. Excuse me. Thank you. Do we have any emergency business?
We do not.
No emergency business. I stepped right over that. Then we have Health and Human Services, a second reading and public hearing on ordinance 1701 in the matter of amending Lane County Code, Chapter 9, to prohibit tobacco sales to persons under 21 years of age. Ms. Mokracy, I understand we have Ms. Gaffney here with us today.
Yeah, me too.
Yes, Ms. Hayes, you're not on the list.
I know, I'm just here to do the warm-up act and do the introduction.
Thank you.
So, good morning, Chair Farr and Commissioners. Today, we're going to start, if it's okay with you, with a short presentation. We'll turn it back to you for the public hearing, but we're going to do a quick overview of the Tobacco 21 ordinance. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Morning, Chair Farr and Commissioners. And we do have a brief presentation, and then, of course, we're prepared for whatever discussion you might have, either before or after the public hearing. Want to set the stage just a little bit of how we got here. I swear that's... Oh, look. It is my phone, I'm sorry. Alex Kyler, he'll just have to wait.
We're all looking at our phones.
So how we got here, I'll remind people who might be new to the conversation in the audience or viewing it on television that tobacco is a priority in our Community Health Improvement Plan, and that this particular policy of increasing the age of tobacco to 21, we now are upwards of 215 jurisdictions, including two states that have adopted this policy. Back in March of last year, you began as a Board of Health, having the discussion about moving this policy forward. In June, asked us to gather information from key stakeholders about the impacts of this policy, so we took the summer and the fall to do that, and then in November, directed us to work with County Council to prepare an ordinance. And then, most recently, in January, we held the first reading of this ordinance, and in that session, you requested a couple amendments. And so the text that is in front of you today incorporates those two amendments. The first was to reduce the age of clerks to be able, in a retail fashion, to sell tobacco, that you could be 18 for that. That age did not increase to 21. And then the second amendment that you requested at first reading was to exempt those who are 18 when the ordinance, 18 or older when the ordinance goes into effect. And so I think as we talk about that, we'll refer to it as the grandfathering clause, but that's what that particular amendment was. And we're certainly happy to talk about those. We did do a little bit of outreach in terms of that grandfathering piece, and so if you want to have more conversation about that after the public hearing, we're happy and prepared to do that. Before the public hearing, I wanted to at least review what's in the ordinance so that the public would be familiar, if they haven't had a chance, to look at the text about exactly what we've prepared. Before I get to that, I would remind you that in terms of that outreach you asked us to do in the summer, we had a conversation with regional managers. Alicia and I traveled with the county administrator to Florence and met with regional managers about this policy. And then in September, Commissioner Stewart invited us to join him for the mayor's roundtable to discuss with the cities this policy. Again, that's important because unlike some other policies, like the tobacco retail licensing, the way this policy is written, it is to affect all of Lane County. You're adopting it as a Board of Health, so it would apply across the county, and we wanted to make sure the cities had an opportunity to weigh in on that. We also held a series of five community meetings in September to give the general public an opportunity, in addition to, of course, what they'll have today in the public hearing, to really provide input and shape that policy. And then finally, did some targeted outreach to schools, youth, retailers, and medical and health stakeholders. All of that was really with the idea to make sure that you had all of the best information available as you decide the policy to move forward. And I know we've talked about it here at the board before. While there are 215-plus jurisdictions across the country, you would be the first in Oregon to adopt this policy. We've talked about the health rationale for the policy in particular, and so in advance of the hearing, I would just remind the community that 96% of people who are smokers start before the age of 21, so this policy is really geared at strengthening that prevention piece. We reviewed a report from the Institute of Medicine that estimated the impact of these policies is particularly strong on the age group of 15- to 17-year-olds, and we could expect a decrease of their initiation rates by 25%, and that's largely because of the pipeline into high schools that gets shut down as the age for legal purchase increase. We also talked about this policy aligning the age with alcohol and marijuana laws, which are both 21-years-of-age to purchase in the state. So in some ways, that makes it easier for retailers. We know that, for instance, Oregon IDs are delineated specifically to make it easier for retailers to see who's age 21 or older with red boxes around the picture, so it aligns in that way. And really, in terms of the big-picture health impact, what we would expect over time is a significant impact on mortality and morbidity. So we talk about decreasing initiation rates among teenagers. What that means is that those people are less likely to ever smoke, and it means that their health impacts, again, tobacco is the number-one leading cause of death in our community and in our country. And so if we can stop those people from starting in the first place, the health impacts over time are huge. And then finally, just a reminder that in the most recent survey data, we have in Lane County, 75% of adults have reported supporting increasing the age for tobacco to 21. This chart you've seen before, and that's the Institute of Medicine data that shows the reduction of 25% among 15- to 17-year-olds. And of course, this particular study was done assuming full implementation and didn't take into effect the grandfathering piece, but once we would have it affecting the entire population, we would expect a 25% reduction. So let's talk about the ordinance itself. We have structured this to amend your current tobacco section, and certainly, I'm happy to answer questions about the text in each of those sections, but here, I just wanted to at least give an overview. We did suggest amending several definitions. Some of that was clarifying, again, this issue of Lane County applying to the entire geography of Lane County, not just unincorporated Lane County, and then updating some of the definitions around specific tobacco devices. I know when we adopted those a couple of years ago, we forecasted that the industry will continue to change, and we'll need to update that, so we took the opportunity to do some of that with this amendment. In 710, that's the section that actually prohibits the sale of tobacco and vaping products to people under 21. It currently says 18, so we're increasing the age to 21 there. It's in that section at your last meeting where we included the exemption for individuals who were 18 years or older. When we read that in last meeting, we read in March 16, knowing that we're likely to go to a third reading if we want to continue that. We'd want to talk about changing that date to an April date, and County Council has a new date prepared, if you'd like to do that. This section also requires identification to be checked and posting of signs by retailers. There are also amendments in 715, which is the section that prohibits possession, distribution, and use by people under age 18. We changed that to 21, and again, included the exemption, the grandfathering clause, and specifically called out an exemption for young people under age 21 who are working with the department or law enforcement as youth decoys to help on the enforcement section, enforcement of the code. In 725, we talked about penalties and enforcement, establishing fines for violations in that section, and then also clarifying a statement that tobacco retailer who holds a license, and again, that's in unincorporated Lane County, commits a violation, may be subject to suspension or revocation of that violation, of their license, and then allowing peace officers to confiscate for anyone under 21-years-of-age who's in possession. We made a couple adjustments to the retail licensing section, and again, part of that is because your retail licensing code applies only in unincorporated Lane County, so we wanted to make sure that was clear. So we made some adjustments there, and then looking at throughout the rest of the code, a few minor changes to address the changes in definitions that were up front and rearrange some sections to make more logical sense, but there aren't really substantive changes as a result of the changes in the rest of the code. So that is our high-level staff overview, and again, we're happy to answer questions before or after the public hearing as you desire.
Thank you, Ms. Gaffney. Any questions or comments from the board for Ms. Gaffney? Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Gaffney, I've had a couple of different conversations with concerned citizens about this action. One was black market, conversation about black market. I was curious if there's been any information that might address that available, you know, either from California or Hawaii who was taking this action. Do you know of any?
What I can say in general to that is, this is one of those times, it's nice to not be the very first jurisdiction that's moving forward, so that has not been a significant issue in the 215 jurisdictions that have gone before us in developing a black market. Can I say that there will absolutely never be anyone who passes a cigarette to someone who's younger? We can't promise that, but what we can expect is the significant reductions that the Institute of Medicine sees in those rates, so.
What about purchasing the products over the internet, online? Are you familiar with that process? I was pointed out that essentially, you can buy any type of product over the internet, and that might play to the black market. Are you aware of any of that activity?
I can certainly confer with our tobacco staff to get more details. Again, based on the experience of other jurisdictions, they have not seen that to be a significant problem, but I can certainly get you some more specific information on that.
I appreciate it. I believe we'll have to have another reading and possible hearing, so maybe that information could be supplied. And I would also point out, I believe each of us received a letter from, an individual from Hawaii that worked on their Tobacco 21, that pointed out the real difficulty that if we, they exempted current 18-year-olds until they were 21 and went through that process, and it was a very confusing, difficult process for the retailers. So I hope each of you got to read that memo, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Other questions or comments for Ms. Gaffney? The, you know, the state, when I was in the House, I was on the Revenue Committee, and the state pays particular attention to internet sales of tobacco and other taxed products. So there's some information there regarding how that is controlled as internet tobacco comes into the state. So Commissioner Sorensen, then Commissioner Bozovic. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question about the different ages. What is the rationale for having some sort of phase-in or differentiation between people that can use tobacco on day one and people that can use tobacco on day 50? What's the rationale? Is there some sort of phase-in? Is that the idea? Or why wouldn't it just be 21 all the way, or 18 all the way, or 19 all the way? What's the rationale for having different ages?
Commissioner, Chair Farr and Commissioner Sorensen, I'm sorry, I was trying to tell if Commissioner Bozovic was wanting to respond to that particular question.
If you would prefer that Commissioner Bozovic respond.
I'm certainly happy either way. It was an amendment that was made at first reading that was Commissioner Bozovic's suggestion, so maybe it makes the most sense.
Okay, so it wasn't something that was started at the beginning of this?
Correct.
Okay, okay, yeah. And I do remember Commissioner Bozovic.
Commissioner Bozovic for response, and then back to you, Commissioner Sorensen.
Basically, and it was something I've been talking about all along, I think I started promoting Tobacco 21 to staff way back in 2011 or '12, when they first came and met with me, talking about how the chip was going to be formed. You guys remember those conversations. I've been talking about this for over five years now, and at the same time, I've always talked about a phase-in. Nicotine is one of the most addictive substances known to man, more addictive than cocaine. And to take something that is currently a legal product for 18-year-olds to be addicted to and immediately tell them that they have to cold turkey, beat that addiction, and having beaten that addiction myself, I know how difficult it is. We are basically telling people that are addicted to a legal product that they are going to have to become criminals to support their addiction if we don't grandfather this. So for me, it's about being fair to those that are already addicted of legal age and letting them have a chance to phase out and all that. You know, to go straight to 21, even with support from us, which I don't think we've got the financial resources to offer support to every 18- to 20-year-old that's addicted to smoking in Lane County on a personal basis to help them quit, I think is a difficult thing. But having a phase-in, yes, it might be for three years, it might cause some difficulty for retailers, but it's only for a three-year period, and eventually, it's just like everything else, I think is a fairness issue to those that are addicted to a highly addictive substance that's currently legal for them to purchase.
Thank you for that response, Commissioner Bozovic. Commissioner Sorensen, then back to you, Commissioner Bozovic.
I'm good, thanks. Thanks for that.
So unfortunately, on the fly last time, we'd gotten some late questions about the age of sales because you're allowed to sell alcohol as an 18-year-old and all that, and I think there was some concern about we had some language problems in that on-the-fly change we made last time. Is that something we need to, we'll have to correct this reading and go to a third reading? I just want to clarify that, that what we have in front of us now is uncorrected language.
Chair Farr and Commissioner Bozovic, it is the language that was at the end of the first reading, and County Council's Office, Andy Clark, has some prepared language amendments if you want to do those. Do you want to let them know now what those are, and then?
Now would be a good time, thank you.
All right, thank you.
People are aware of that for the public hearing.
Board, yeah. It makes sense to talk about potential changes to the ordinance before the hearing, and so I'm happy to do that. The two things that I've written these out so that the board members can have this in front of them, and if it's approved, acceptable to the board to have it read into the code changes as the official ordinance being read today.
For the second reading.
The first change would be in three instances in the draft code, we've referenced the date, March 16, for the phase-in that Commissioner Bozovic was just speaking of, because that was to be the effective date of the ordinance if it were approved today, I think. Because we're going to likely need another reading of this, it made sense to push that date out, and so if the board agrees with doing that, you don't need to, mind you. But in terms of keeping the phase-in date consistent with the effective date of the ordinance, it makes sense to change that date from March 16 to April 13 of 2017.
April 13, thank you.
Correct. That appears in three instances in the draft code in Sections 9.710 and 9.715. The other change, and I think this is what Commissioner Bozovic was just referring to, to sort of address the issue of allowing individuals who are at least 18-years-of-age to sell tobacco products and maintain the prohibition on use of tobacco products if you're less than 21. I'm proposing, if, again, if the board agrees, this is where you want to go with it, some new language that would get at that issue, and I can pass that out, those hard copies out to the board now if you'd like.
Thank you. Now would be a good time for that also. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that people are aware that we may end up going to a third reading, and it's just really about making sure we're... reading, and it's just really about making sure we were correctly allowing the, have the correct language in as far as the 18-year-old sales, and making sure that was understood, that that was lawfully employed by a tobacco retailer, they couldn't go out and sell to a friend later on and be legal. So that, that language, you know, as we were trying to fix that on the fly last time for the first reading, failed to really delineate well between the two, and it had a conflict in it, so this resolves that conflict between those two. So unfortunately, I think it's probably going to be necessary for us to go to a third reading, which means we'll have to make that change on the effective date and when, when the grandfathering starts. Still going to be far ahead of anything the state does, because the states, if they do pass something statewide, won't be effective till the 91st day after Sonny die, and it's looking like Sonny die this year, maybe in August, September, who knows? So, so it's going to probably be after the school year starts, and I'd sure love to have this in place before the school year starts again.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Further comments? A couple of things, you know, we have a community health improvement plan for the county, very, very well accepted universally by the board, and it's also lauded beyond the borders of our county, the entire state, and beyond even the state. Takes a look at our community health improvement plan, and looks at the tenets of it, and the way we've adopted it, and the way we've moved forward with it, and by all accounts, it's, it's state-of-the-art. Our community health improvement plan identifies reducing smoking in Lane County as an important strategy for improving health in Lane County. It prioritizes the adoption of tobacco prevention policies. So, moving forward with that, we are at our second reading on, on this ordinance. If it does go to a third reading, if we do adopt the phase-in and additionally, the additional language that Mr. Clark just described, then the next reading would likely be March 14th, so we'll take a look at that. One thing I'm going to mention, there are people in the audience today, and people who are watching, and people who are paying close attention to this, who don't like the thought of a phased-in. And in fact, Ms. Gaffney, you looked at the numbers and you said that the 25% reduction does not include grandfathering in or phasing in, that the 25% would be reduced for a period of time. And those, I think those numbers are accurate, you know, I think it's a fact which is irrefutable, that it would alter the 25% immediately, and kind of kick the can down the road a little bit as far as when 25% takes full implementation. And you know, I've been around a lot of smokers. My mom and dad smoked and quit after smoking for 50-plus years, so you can quit, you know, even with deep addiction to smoking. And I know from personal experience and from anecdotal evidence as well as scientific evidence, that there are two great ways to quit smoking. One is to set a date in the future when you're going to quit, and work backward from that date. How do I quit on March 14th, March 16th, April 13th? How do I quit on that date? And then you step back from there, so that by the time that date comes, you're not cold turkey, and you've made the decision, and that's the day you're going to quit, and you do quit. It does work. The second way is the way my mom quit smoking. You have lung cancer. She quit smoking. Certainly, it extended her life that she quit smoking, but you know, there are two ways to quit smoking. One, set a date and quit. The second, be forced to quit because she can no longer breathe. So I hate the second one. The first one's a lot easier. The first one extends the life of kids who have started smoking and would love to have quit, or would, would love to have never started. So we're moving forward, and we'll discuss the phased-in, and I think it's probably likely that the phased-in, which is in the ordinance that we're reading the second time today, that's going to be the case, and bearing in mind that it will adjust the numbers, the 25% numbers. By and large, it's going to ultimately cause at least 25% of young people to not start smoking, and that's what we're all about, is not having to hear what my mom heard, you have to quit smoking, because you have lung cancer. So it's a, you know, that, let's avoid that, and let's move forward with this. I'm pretty excited. I wish we were passing it today, but two weeks ago, we thought we'd made a small change, which happened to be a little bit bigger than we'd anticipated. We thought it was a small kind of clerical change, it ended up being present through, like cancer, present in a number of places of the body of the ordinance. So we will, we'll move forward, and at this point in time, if there is no, if there are no more questions or comments from Ms. Gaffney or Ms. Hayes, we'll move forward with the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, hearing on ordinance 1701. If you wish to speak to the ordinance, please sign up if you haven't already. We'll take the speakers in the order that they've signed up. You'll have three minutes to speak, at which time you'll hear a signal asking you to sum up the sentence that you're on. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to do something a little bit extraordinary. I'm going to acknowledge somebody in the audience. I'd like to, in deference to one of the truly great Oregonians, Dave Frohnmeyer, I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Mark Frohnmeyer is in the audience with us today. Thank you for being here, and your father was one of the truly great Oregonians. Thank you for being here today. And I understand, Mr. Frohnmeyer, you're wishing to speak to the Board of County Commissioners, and what we're having now is specifically on Tobacco 21, we'll have another public hearing, public comment, comment section after the regular board convenes. With that, I will open the second reading, excuse me, open the public hearing on ordinance 1701. Thank you for the challenge with the first name. First name we have on the list is Andy Griscojak, and correct me if that's-
Thumbs up.
I got a thumbs up, I love it.
Yes, sir, that was, I think, the first time ever that I've heard it pronounced correctly the first time through.
I've been practicing for three days. Thanks for the early warning.
Excellent. My name's Andrew Griscojak, I reside at 45 Vine Lane in Florence, Oregon. I am the school superintendent for Sayusaw School Districts in Florence, Oregon. I'd like to speak in support of the Tobacco 21 initiative that's forward. Where our students get our tobacco is from their friends that are 20, between 18 and 20. That's how it gets in. Part of our mission as a school is to educate students about the dangers of tobacco, and this would be one device in helping to stem that growth in our community, and, you know, allow our kids to have kind of a smoke-free future. Again, I've had smokers in my family and have heard those comments about grandma has to smoke because of emphysema or cancer, and so if we get to a point where kids aren't getting on that track, so much the better. So I thank the commissioners for moving forward with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kerry Tatum, followed by Eric Brodel.
Hi, I'm Kerry Tatum. I am the principal at Sayusaw High School in Florence, Oregon. I also live in Florence. I just wanted to speak in favor of this city ordinance, but again, I would like to say that the majority of our students are getting it from their friends between 18 and 20, and that portion of the ordinance I would like to see amended personally. This, this entire thing has come a little bit more personal, because I have a sixth-grade son who recently was given a vape pen and some product that basically had tobacco or nicotine in it, and so, you know, he's getting those from older kids at his school, but what I want you guys to realize is that it's hitting the middle school. It's hitting my sixth grader, who is, you know, in his first year of middle school, and the only way to truly fix that is to take it away from the people providing it to them. You know, he, he can't go and buy it anywhere, but he's definitely getting it from friends, and they're getting it from their older friends. And the sooner that we put an age limit on the kids that are able to buy it, the sooner it's going to be taken away from kids my son's age and younger, so, thank you.
Thank you. Eric Brodel, followed by Christopher Friend.
Chair Farr, Vice Chair Bozovich, and Lane County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Eric Brodel. I'm the Western Region Director for Tobacco 21 and the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation. Thank you for allowing me to address you today about the Tobacco 21 ordinance in Lane County. Your dedication and leadership to public health has been vital to the well-being of your entire county and the state, so thank you very much. I've been involved in Lane County's Tobacco 21 effort since May of 2016, and have seen and heard, seen the hard work and dedication put forth by you and the Lane County Public Health Department, to ensure that this policy truly protects the greatest number of people possible. During this entire process, you've provided excellent leadership by enacting tobacco retail licensing first, and considering the need for increasing education and enforcement while enacting a new minimum legal sales age law. You've also put forth a good-faith effort to involve community through public meeting processes to allow their voice to be heard. I attended three of these public meetings, and was very pleased with the support I heard from the citizens around the county for a comprehensive law. Pretending to the current status of the ordinance, one unprompted key point made during the public meeting in Florence was the desire to not include grandfathering. The local anti-addiction coalition in Florence was present that day, and made the point that grandfathering burdens retailers and therefore decreases compliance with the law, which is, as we all know, very important. Lower compliance rates are a direct result of confusing nature of grandfathering clause. One 18-year-old will be able to buy tobacco products while another only a day younger will not. Additionally, 14- to 17-year-olds in current high school cohort will still have access to tobacco products through their friend groups during this period, addicting them and possibly even their younger friends as they move through school. This does not reflect the rationality and effectiveness of raising the sales age. The rationality and effectiveness of Tobacco 21 is directly connected to removing sources of tobacco from high school age ranges. Grandfathering clauses effectively render Tobacco 21 laws useless for the first three years of implementation. Additionally, since there was no evident mention of grandfathering in the planning stages, the public in Cottage Grove, Eugene, Springfield, and Oak Ridge did not discuss the implications of grandfathering in this Tobacco 21 ordinance. Discussion at last month's Board of Health meeting focused on a phase-in period, but in reality, as I've been saying, this is a grandfathering clause. I understand taking a sympathetic stance towards addiction, as it is a disease that controls the user completely. However, given that 18- to 20-year-old users are often not as addicted to nicotine as older users are, and that part of the intent of this law is to cut the use of tobacco products by 18- to 20-year-olds, grandfathering poses a significant barrier to effective implementation. A phase-in period is different than grandfathering. Phase-ins are much more common across the country, as they allow for appropriate time period for education of retailers and the public. It gives ample time for individuals aged 18 to 20 that are using tobacco products to start using Quitline, and inquire about FDA-approved cessation devices, and begin the process of quitting tobacco products. Phase-in periods also allow for retailers to go through model inspections without penalty, completely train new employees, as well as revise and post signs stating the new age. I urge you to enact a comprehensive Tobacco 21 law that's informed by other best practices, not including a grandfathering clause, and instead considering a six-to-eight-month phase-in period for the policy for community outreach and retailer education. Again, I'm grateful for your leadership on this in Oregon, and thank you very much for allowing me to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Brodel. Christopher Friend, followed by Jack Jones.
Good morning, Chair Farr, Commissioners, apologies, I'm a little under the weather. Excuse me. First of all, I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to offer a comment this morning. I am the Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We are a nonpartisan, evidence-based organization that's dedicated to passing good public policy that saves lives here in Oregon. At the American Cancer Society, we like to say that we're the official sponsor of birthdays, which is exactly why we support raising the age of sale for tobacco to 21 here in Lane County. Specifically, I appreciate your leadership, not just here in Lane County, but across the state in passing Tobacco 21. You are the leaders in this discussion statewide, and we certainly appreciate that. ACS CAN believes that grandfathering is counter to the intent of Tobacco 21. We believe that while well-intentioned, the grandfather clause would allow additional young people to access tobacco and become new smokers, lifetime smokers that will likely die of that habit, rather than giving an allotment, an allowed time for a current smoker to access cessation services and quit. We believe that those lives of young people who are not currently smokers are at stake, and grandfathering is counterintuitive to what the ordinance is intended to do. As my colleague spoke before, a grandfathering clause certainly complicates enforcement. As you noticed in the presentation from the Public Health Department, one of the pieces of the ordinance would require Tobacco 21 signage. What would that signage say? Would it say Tobacco 21, except for someone who's one day older than someone else? We think that that's rather confusing, especially for a clerk that's selling a variety of products, not just tobacco. Additionally, we're worried because 1,800 kids a day become smokers here in the state of Oregon. Over that three-year period, it's estimated that 5,400 youth will pick up the habit statewide, and certainly, there's a large proportion of that, of those youth that live here in Lane County, and we're concerned about their health. Speaking specifically from my personal standpoint, in the last six months, I watched my grandfather pass away to a tobacco-related death, and watching him suffer in the end of life, gasping for breath, was something that I won't soon forget. And I just ask that you think about those young people who currently are not smokers that will be able to access tobacco products from friends who have recently graduated. Just because you're 18 and graduated one year certainly doesn't mean that you don't spend time with friends in other social circles outside of high school, so please consider that when you're considering the ordinance. Again, we appreciate your leadership on the issue of Tobacco 21, not just here in Lane County, but statewide. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Friend. Next is Jack Jones, followed by Alan Baz.
Jack Jones, 247 West 13th. I'm here as the voice of reason. I believe, I love my county, I love my country. The, the customers that I serve every day are this group of 18- to 21-year-olds. I believe that they're being bullied. These are people who, we are telling them, we're going to send them to war. You guys, we can let you have marriage, we can let you buy a house, but we do not trust you with tobacco. Guys, we cannot be the first county in Oregon to take this on. This makes Lane look terrible. Saying, okay, we're going to have a grandfather thing, says we're worried about the voter backlash for that age group. That's what that says. The idea that we're giving that group time to wean off because it's going to be illegal? Are you kidding me? The discussion about black market today is not a black market discussion. You're talking about gray market. You're talking about retailers selling to people that they know they shouldn't. You're talking about Internet sales. That's not black market. Black market is Yeti, an app on your phone, pictures of drugs, prices, delivered. The black market is healthy. Cocaine prices in Lane County, let's talk about a health issue, let's talk about cocaine. It's cheaper, it's easier to get. Why? The black market is very sophisticated, very fast. The second we outlaw this, the 18- to 21-year-olds, now we've got kids in a dorm room stocking tobacco. Now kids don't have to go to a retailer and support the taxes, pay the cigarette tax, the income tax, the self-employment tax, the payroll tax. All of that is going to a thug in a room who just drove to an Indian reservation and filled up a box van in the weekend. You guys, this is nuts. If you think you're going to stop 18- to 21-year-olds from doing anything, sit with me for a few minutes in my shop. If you guys are going to step into this realm of saying no paraphernalia, nothing that you, what, how are you going to define paraphernalia? So you're going to tell in Lane County now 18- to 21-year-olds that they cannot legally go buy a water pipe? You guys have no idea. This is marching on the, in the street-level stuff. I mean, get a grip on this. What you're doing is setting a precedent that the, the reason why I'm here is, I grew up in upstate New York. I heard that there's this awesome place called Eugene, Oregon, and that I might have an opportunity to go to college there, and live there, in a progressive area. Now kids are going to make the choice, am I going to be a beaver or a duck because I have legal access to tobacco or not? You guys got to get this, the economic reality is boom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Alan Baz, followed by Susan Fanner.
Thank you, Chairman Farr, for figuring out how to spell my name, pronounce my name as well. I'm Alan Baz, I'm from Cottage Grove, I live at 34168 Scott Road, and I quit smoking when I turned about age 50, but the only way I quit smoking was I married somebody who was stronger than I was. Sam, I really appreciate that. When I quit smoking, I thought I'd skip that bullet, because I don't have any holes in my lungs, but I'm in my 70s now, and I no longer carry a sack of grain out to my chicken house, because my muscles still need oxygen, and I never figured out that my smoking was wiping out my ability to get oxygen from my muscles, so, see, I'm running out now. So, I support very much what you're doing, thank you very much, and I- doing. Thank you very much, and I would appreciate it if you'd think about that phased-in kind of change rather than a three-year grandfathering clause for that. Other than that, again, thank you folks for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Boz. Susan Fanner, and Susan is the last person I have signed up for the public hearing.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to read a letter that we sent to you on behalf of the Public Health Advisory Committee. My name is Susan Fanner, and I live at 1788 Riverview Street in Eugene. Lane County Board of Commissioners, regarding the Lane County and state policy on Tobacco 21. As your Public Health Advisory Committee, it is our privilege and responsibility to serve as support in the adoption of strategies that lead to health outcomes which improve population health, well-being, and equity, reduce and manage chronic diseases. That is directly from the Live Healthy Lane chip or Community Health Improvement Plan. You have charged us with providing recommendations to you on matters of public health planning and policy development. We are writing in support of, one, raising the legal age from 18 to 21 years old for sales of tobacco products in Lane County, and Senate Bill 754, increasing Oregon's legal age to 21 years old for sales of tobacco products. This strategy aligns with the Community Health Improvement Plan as a policy to address a main driver of youth tobacco use. Increasing the legal age for tobacco is an effective tool to prevent initiation of tobacco use among our youth. We recommend your support for Lane County's Ordinance 17-01. We also request reconsideration of the Second Amendment related to Section 9.71-0 subsection 1 and 9.715 subsection 1, exempting individuals 18 years old on March 16, 2017. Additionally, please consider support for Senate Bill 754, state legislation to increase the legal age to 21 years old for sale of tobacco products. The Tobacco 21 policy has direct positive impacts on the long-term health for current residents and future generations. Sincerely, Jake Lake Homer, Chair of the Public Health Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Fanner. And Ms. Fanner was the last person we had signed up for the public hearing. At this time, I'll invite anyone else who wishes to address the Board of Health and the County Commissioners regarding Tobacco 21. Soon on, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor to discussion from the board. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the folks coming to testify today, and I really appreciate this. Yesterday, at the Associate Oregon County Legislative Committee, the Legislative Committee voted unanimously to support SB 754. And that is, as you just mentioned, that's a statewide, I'm going to repeat, the statewide Tobacco 21 law that has actually been introduced on a bipartisan level. Senator Steiner Hayward from the Senate, Representative Vile, Republican, from the House. It's bipartisan, and in fact, the momentum is really actually moving forward very strongly on this. As I've made it very clear, I oppose this. I see no reason to put Lane County in as an island, but I do support the idea of a statewide, because if you have California and Oregon, I think it's only time for Washington then would also. That would mean the three states on the West Coast would have a Tobacco 21 law in place. And I think that's frankly where we should do. I'm going to make a motion. I know I won't get a second. I'm going to make it anyway. And my motion would be, at this point, we pull Ordinance 1701 until a further date when the legislature then enacts law, and then instead, we move this to Legislative Committee and put this forth as a high priority in lobbying the state legislature to pass SB 754.
We have a motion to pull 1701. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of second?
As I figured. So, Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you very much for that. I don't think, I just strongly believe we're creating an island here, and as I stated before, Harrisburg is no more than five minutes away from Junction City, and that's in Lynn County. And it's very easy for somebody to go from Junction City to Harrisburg if they really want to buy cigarettes or any sort of tobacco products. And as I stated before, I've never smoked. My family doesn't smoke. Nobody in my family smokes, and I would be all for if the country, United States as a whole, would ban tobacco products, period. Be no skin off my teeth. I couldn't care less, because there's been no dollars exchanged with stores in my family to purchase tobacco products. And so for that tax that's on tobacco sales, we do a lousy job supporting that tax, my family does. And so, and I'm proud of that. But that's where I'm at on this. Even if we go to a third reading today, I'm going to vote no, and I just strongly believe that this should be a statewide law, and it makes more sense from that perspective than Lane County creating an island. I think the information is very, and this has nothing to do with taking away from staff, the information here is good information. We could use this information to lobby our state legislators to put forth a statewide law instead of putting forth just a county-wide ordinance. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this and to Alicia and Karen and your staff. Thank you very much for the work. It's valuable, and as we move forward, as I stated yesterday, I voted yes in the Legislative Committee, so I personally will be lobbying our state legislature to pass a statewide law, and I believe that's where it makes the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lichen, and that recommendation to the Legislative Committee came from AOC's Board of Health, excuse me, Health Committee, which I serve on. You passed forward that recommendation.
Yep.
There was also a House bill that was a little bit more convoluted than the Senate bill. We have before is then Ordinance 1701, which includes the blue highlighted provisions on 9.71 and 9.71, 710 and 9.715, which includes the so-called grandfathering language. Further discussion. Commissioner Sorenson.
Is there support to take out the grandfathering?
You could try that with a motion.
Okay. I move that we take out the grandfathering concept.
Second that.
We have a motion with a second discussion to the motion to remove 9.710, the blue highlighted, which it says, except for individuals who are 18 years of old or older on March 16, 2017, and which would be revised, by the way, to April 13. And the blue highlighted except for in 9715, who are 18, which, same language. So, Commissioner Sorenson, please continue.
Maybe Mr. Clark from the Lane County Council's office could answer this question for me, and that is, the way it is now, the way the breeding is now, there's this phase-in. And what I want to do is to make it more clear and have no phase-in. Is that accomplished by this motion?
Yes, Commissioner, I believe it is. The, well, it's not part of your motion. I don't want to convolute it if it's an issue you're not interested in. If you want to talk about the sort of phase-in that some of the speakers discussed, we can do that by changing the effective date of the ordinance, but yes, your motion would remove the grandfathering or phase-in language, which is except for individuals who are 18 or older on March 16, 2017.
It just seems like the, if the county's going to move towards this policy, if the county's going to move toward this policy of lowering or raising the purchase age, it ought to be as clear as possible. And I think that this motion helps to make it clear. So, I would urge the board to take that action. I know that Commissioner Bozovich put a lot of time into this and made a motion, and we put it into the last draft, but I think upon more thought and listening to the public, I think we should take it the way it was originally put out to the public for review.
Thank you. Further discussion to the motion. Commissioner Bozovich.
Thank you. So, you know, whether you call it phase-in or grandfathering, there's still some question about how you deal with people that are currently legal age to purchase tobacco and currently addicted to tobacco and nicotine products. I felt that having an effective date of, you know, when you turn 18 set clearly, and having that work in over the three years was treating those folks that are addicted to a legal product fairly. I feel that changing that and eliminating it is basically telling folks that are addicted that they are going to have to participate in the black market. I've been there. I was addicted during my years from 18 to 21. It was no less addictive than when I tried to quit at age 25 and finally was successful. If it had been easier at age 18 to 21, I probably wouldn't have had to take till 25 to quit. The power of that addiction is the same, no matter how old you are. As far as, you know, continuing the access to youth, if we pass this on our third reading and the effective date's April 13, there will be a very small amount of seniors in next year's senior class that will actually have the legal ability to purchase tobacco. Most of them will be underage, won't turn 18 till after April 13. And in the following year, it will be most of the freshman class in all of our community colleges and our local colleges will not be able to purchase tobacco and following that. So that eventually, we get to the point where we reach that 25, and there, in some jurisdictions, it was as much as a 50% reduction in youth initiation because they didn't have peers in the 18 to 21 age group that could actually purchase for them. We get an immediate bang for the buck. It may not be the full 25%, but the fact that we can act faster than the state in this county, because they aren't going to be able, even Senate Bill, and I testified in favor of Senate Bill 754. You know, I went up to Salem and gave personal testimony about that. That's still, as a public health law, 91 days after Sonny died, and they may choose to have a phase-in. They, you know, it hasn't gone through all its amendments. It's still in process. They may choose to have the same grandfathering. But, you know, to me, I think to be fair to those that are addicted to a legal product right now, you know, and not have, you know, any real problems with forcing them into a black market if they're unsuccessful in quitting their addiction, which I personally struggle with and have two brothers that still smoke because they personally struggle with it, and they're both my older brothers. So, you know, 60-some years later, they're still smoking. This is really, I think, an important aspect of fairness in this ordinance, and I think stripping it is basically going to make this unfair to folks that are currently addicted, and it may actually strip my ability to support the ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Further discussion to the motion. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes. So, Mr. Clark, I wanted to ask you, I supported this motion for conversation. So, it sounds like we are legally going to need an additional reading. We may not need a hearing, or would a hearing be included?
It depends on what, excuse me, changes the board wants to make today as to whether or not you'd need a third reading. As it currently, well, as it currently stands, without the changes, the draft changes that I presented and Karen and I presented this morning, I don't think you would need a third reading. If the idea, if under Commissioner Bozovich's motion to remove items from the code language, I don't think you'd need a third reading to accomplish that. I think the board would probably adopt it without today, because it's an elimination of matters rather than addition.
Thank you. And we're discussing Commissioner Sorenson's motion, seconded by Commissioner Stewart at this point in time. Thank you.
And so the question would be is, if we did have an additional reading and potential hearing, we could strip that language out and still pass it. It's not a, because we're making it less, or that language has already been there, we could, or take it out, we can pass it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, clarification, if this, if Commissioner Sorenson's motion passes, we would be able to pass Ordinance 1701 today?
Yes, you would. That, however, doesn't include that extra language that I gave you this morning, which hasn't been read yet, which has to do with providing the exemption for folks to sell who are 18 years of age as part of a retail establishment.
And I think this is essential language. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I think that's absolutely critical language for me to support this, to take somebody that has a job today and that's 18, working in a retail establishment, and to say that you can't work there now until you're 21. I'm not in favor of that, period whatsoever. People need to work, and they're earning the resources to survive, and so that's going to be critical to be included for an additional reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Further discussion to the motion. I see no further discussion. Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion fails three to two. Back to the discussion regarding Ordinance 1701. We have before is additional language, which adds a new subsection three to Lane Code 7.15. Notwithstanding the provision, prohibition of Lane Code 9.715, 1 and 2, an individual who is at least 18 years of age may possess, receive, sell, distribute tobacco products while lawfully employed and performing the duties of a tobacco retailer.
One quick correction to that. The last part of that sentence is while lawfully employed as and performing the duties of a tobacco retailer.
As and, thank you.
Mr. As.
Thank you. So, that should read while lawfully employed as and performing the duties of a tobacco retailer. And that is a part currently of the second reading that we are engaging in. So, we're engaging in the second reading. Commissioner Bozovich.
So, I'd like to move approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1701 as published with the following adjustments in the second reading, that in Lane Code 7, 9710 in one instance and 9715 in two instances, that the date, the change in the effective date from March 16, 2017, be to April 13, 2017, and we add the new subsection three to Lane Code 9715 that you just read, and setting the third reading and deliberations for March 14.
Thank you. We have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a seconded motion, discussion to the motion, which is for accepting the second reading and as amended, as described, and setting a third reading for March 14. Mr. Clark.
Yeah, one minor item, point of clarification, just so the public and the board is aware of the issue. The language as read by Commissioner Bozovich now with respect to the effective date would make the change from March 16 to April 13, 2017, and that would mark the beginning of the phase-in that we've discussed. I probably incorrectly used the word effective. The ordinance we have will become effective 30 days after its adoption. This date, however, will be the date of adoption for the phase-in period, just so everyone's clear that that's going on.
So, with a March 14, should we pass the ordinance on March 14, the effective date would be April 12? Is that correct?
Not sure. We're talking about with the, moving this for a third reading would make the adoption date be April 13, assuming the board approved it on that date, the date of the third reading. So, the effective date would be 30 days after April 13, the adoption date, but the window for the phase-in period we've talked about would start on the adoption date of April 13, 2017.
Is that clear to everyone?
Yeah. That'll be when people have to be 18 years or older.
Correct.
Commissioner Stewart? Only other question. Do we need to have a public hearing along with this reading?
No, no, you don't. That was the point of my going over these potential changes that the board, I think, will approve, was so that folks who were speaking at the hear- that the board, I think, will approve, was so that folks who were speaking at the hearing would speak in connection with those potential changes. And we did hear some comments on the, what was termed the grandfathering window that we just discussed versus a delayed, a delayed effective date strategy, which the board can consider. But at this point, we, we're going with, or the board seems to be going the direction of this grandfathering approach of creating a window of permitted activity.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. So, is everyone clear on the dates and everyone clear on the motion that is before us at this point in time, which is for a third reading on March, accepting the second reading, including the blue highlighted items in 9.710 and 9.715 and the additional items read in by Commissioner Bozovic? So, the motion is to accept the third reading and set a, a second reading and set a third reading for March 14th. Discussion further to that motion. Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. I just want to address a few things that were brought up, not only in public comment, but in emails and other comments from the public. Because there is, we've heard a lot of support at this public hearing and in our public comments. We've heard, you know, one person speak in opposition, but I can say that we've had many other people contact us in opposition to this. And I just want to be clear, you know, we've, we as a society have decided that there's certain age periods when we feel like we want to have products be legal or illegal. We've set that for alcohol. We've set it for marijuana. We have a legal age limit on lottery purchase. You know, there's all sorts of things we set age limits on, and it hasn't always been consistent to be a single age. We recognize that there's some products, because of access to minors and our desire in this society to protect children that haven't matured enough to make the decision to use an addictive product or a intoxicant, we've decided to set some of those higher than the established age for other things, like getting a driver's license at 16 or, you know, being able to get married, believe it or not, at 18. You know, they're different things. We're choosing, I think, this board, in moving this forward, if we have a successful vote, to align nicotine and tobacco products up with how we treat alcohol and marijuana in society. And I don't think that that's out of the ordinary. I don't think it's disrespecting folks that may have served in our military. In fact, our military is striving to recruit folks that aren't tobacco addicted because it's a readiness issue for them. You know, and our police academy is the same thing. It's a readiness issue for them. And they actually support this effort. If you had talked to our sheriff, he supports Tobacco 21. If we can get folks not to initiate smoking before age 18, they're 80 to 90% less likely to ever become a smoker. And this is about cutting off that, the most common supply to minors for tobacco and nicotine products, which is friends, peers, and siblings that are 18 to 20. Usually by the time somebody gets to be 21, they're mature enough not to give a 17-year-old an addictive product. You know, there'll be other ways. You know, we all know, you know, shoot, you know, we all, at some time in high school, were exposed to products that were illegal for our age group, whether it was alcohol, marijuana, or even completely illegal and banned drugs like cocaine and other products. That will always be around in society. This is shown, though, that we can make a huge difference. 25% minimum in the initiation of use of nicotine in minors. Hoping that those folks will be part of that 80 to 90% that will never use nicotine and never have to deal with the issues that we heard the young gentleman talking about his grandfather gasping for air as, as he, you know, was suffering, you know, lung cancer and other issues with tobacco and nicotine addiction. My father passed from nicotine-related heart disease. It's a horrible disease. And to get 80 to 90% of our folks, that 20, I mean, that 25% to be 80 to 90% less likely to ever deal with that, I fully support this. It's one of the reasons why I supported Tobacco 21 up at the state legislature, but I think it's worth us moving ahead. As to some of the arguments about us being an island in the state, there have been cities that have enacted this where you could just step across the city line to purchase as an 18- to 20-year-old, but it still was effective in reducing minors from initiating use of nicotine.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. We're just about ready for the vote. I will remind people that Senate Bill 754 is a statewide, would provide statewide Tobacco 21 considerations. It's not finalized yet. It's in the Senate. There's gonna be quite a bit of discussion before that is finalized, and there'll be a chance to amend that any way that you can. So, each of us has an opportunity to speak to our legislators, and there are 91 of them. Sometimes it's hard to get to all of them other than to the hearings that are specific to the, to the Senate bill, which is 754. There is a House bill too, which I think will be amended to drop the 21. I think it'll just go on as a taxation issue on vaping products. But, so, Senate Bill 754 is out there, and very likely before the end of this year, the whole state will have a similar law to the one that we are discussing right now in Lane County. And I'll also mention that I lived in Monmouth when you could step across the city line to Independence and buy beer, and you couldn't buy it in Monmouth. And that was a very dangerous stretch of highway, I gotta tell you, between Monmouth and Independence. With that, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor of accepting the second reading and setting a third reading for March 14th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
No.
I am sorry, jumped the gun on that. All those opposed?
No.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Lichen opposed. And that will most likely come before the Board of Health and the Board of County Commissioners on March 14th at 9:00 a.m. Thank you very much for your participation today. And this concludes the joint meeting of the Board of Health and Board of County Commissioners. In about 30 seconds, I'll move on to the next item on the agendas.
Good morning. I will now convene this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. This is our regular meeting. Mr. Mokr Heisky.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
To the board, any adjustments to the agenda? None. Then we'll move forward with item two on the agenda, which is public comment. We have one person signed up for the public comment today. You'll be taken in the order you're signed up. When I call your name, please step to the microphone, and you will have three minutes to talk to the Board of County Commissioners. First person we have signed up is Mr. Mark Fronmeyer. Mr. Fronmeyer?
Chair for members of the commission. I have a handout. Can I bring that up for you guys?
Please. Thank you. And I'll pause your timer.
By this time last week, we'd been adjourned for half an hour. Just a fact.
We don't have that ability today, so.
Because of that, we will not be, we'll be here until dinnertime.
So, I'll be quick. I've had a chance to speak with each of you individually off, you know, over coffee about an election reform measure that we are putting forward called score runoff voting. And the idea here is to save candidates and voters and the county a ton of money and time by getting rid of one of our two elections, and in one election, do a much better job of actually representing the electorate than we currently are able to do in two separated six-month processes. So, if you'll all recall the Eugene City Council race in Ward 1, you know, we had a contested primary election that ran for six months, and then two candidates had to move on to a runoff election for another six months for a job that, you know, requires a lot of extra time and very little actual, you know, support from, from the public. So, the notion here is to really start at the local level to reform our election processes, to prove a new system here in Lane County, to be the early adopter, and then eventually, when it works, go out to the state and then to the rest of the country. And a couple of folks brought up the idea that if we actually asked the voters to consider a new system that they've never tried before, that it would actually be really valuable to have mock election in advance of the November vote, that would give folks a chance to actually try it on something that is, you know, and I was originally thinking Filberts versus Apples versus, you know, whatever Lane County produce. But it was actually Commissioner Stewart who had the, I think, quite brilliant idea of highlighting the work that Lane County has done on economic development with the breweries, and actually, if they are inclined, get the breweries to be the candidates in this mock election this May. So, the, I actually have three asks. The first is on, you know, the simplest one is just to, to discuss the notion and to engage county's legal counsel to help review the proposed charter amendment that we would be pushing by petition to the ballot in November. The second request, slightly higher lift, is to actually put that question directly to the people, you know, absent a petitioning phase. So, my understanding is that the commission can actually refer that question of a charter amendment directly to the voters. And then the third is, is actually to run, and this is more the quick timeline version, is to run a mock election using this system, whether it is with breweries or with produce or with, you know, what have you certainly is a question. But the, this handout is the proposal for, for that mock election and using, using the breweries as the candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Fronmeyer. Thank you. I'll, that's the last, Ms. Fronmeyer was the only person signed up. I'll throw it open to anyone in the audience. Any of y'all out there who would wish to make a presentation of the Board of County Commissioners on general subjects? I see nobody, so we'll close the public comment period. To the board, remonstrances, responses. Commissioner Sorensen?
Well, since I'm in a phase of phasing away from being a candidate, when I saw who wins candidates, voters, and the county, I'm much more focused now than in the previous quarter century on voters in the county. And it seems like one of the really wonderful features of this would be that the public's views on, on these candidates for these various elections, and I guess we're really focused more on the, on the county elections and maybe even more specifically the Board of Commissioners, it seems like we would be able to, you know, make it much easier on the voters in the sense that there would be the, the instant runoff component of this that greatly shortens the period of time. Because I've been through one of these elections where I've got to win a primary, which had a number of candidates, and then I have to run a November election with one of my opponents, and I've got to rerun the whole thing, contact a whole bunch of voters again, raise a lot more money again. And I'm not sure that the, the outcome would have been any different had we had the, the method that you're suggesting. And I do like the idea of trying this out, and I'm wondering if we would be allowed to conduct that election as a county project, or whether, in other words, the mock elections. It's obvious we could, we could make a charter amendment and charter referral. I'm not sure if it's a referral referendum. Hmm, I think it's, which is that?
Referral.
Is it a referral when the board sends it to the voters? Yeah, referral. It's a referendum when the voters ask to have the government's buy. So, the referral by the county, it seems to me is a great idea. And I think we should get going on that in the form of a charter committee and get that going for, for November. But I'm also interested in the mock election using either the proposal you have or another one, but I'm, I'd be interested legally whether we could do that. Can we do that for like September or?
I'd have to think about that a little bit more.
Yes, yeah, sorry to catch you on the fly on this. I didn't know we were having this presentation today, but I do think it's something we should jump on. And I think that if the county couldn't do it, maybe a fallback would be to have the breweries take an interest in it. And since the method of computation is pretty arithmetic, I don't see the need to have too big of a, of a policing of who votes in the, in that election, in that mock election. So, that could be done, you know, fairly promptly, fairly, you know, especially if the county were, if the board were interested in getting together a committee for purposes of making that referral, to me, that would be a great idea. And I think it would be a way to save some money. And although my motive isn't to make life easier for candidates, it has that benefit, but it really makes things easier for the voters, you know? And I think that's who we're here to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Now, I'm gonna mention something that I should have mentioned at the start of this regular meeting. We do have an 11 o'clock time certain executive session today because of, because of people will be calling in for that executive session at 11 o'clock sharp. So, and that's gonna be a long executive session, at least an hour, as far as I can tell. So, and we have two other items besides a consent calendar on this agenda. So, responses, remonstrances. Commissioner, it's Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, to, to ask you, I'm intrigued by this, and I'm intrigued enough to at least offer a head nod, but my question to you is, would you like that done now, or would you like that done under agenda team requests? Because we can make that then, and I'm more than happy to wait until then and then to see where the, the board is as we have this information in front of us. And so, I'll look to you for that. And then one last item I just want to say is, you'd mentioned Mark's father, Dave, and who I personally knew very well. And in fact, Dave was someone who was a mentor to me, as Mark knows, and I've adored his family for a long time. And so, Mark, I just want to say thank you, and I just, as you know, I loved your dad dearly, and he did a lot for me over the years and, and always picked up the phone when I called, sometimes over the most dumbest things, but he always picked up the phone. I was always appreciative of that. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Lichen. And let's entertain the suggestion during the regular agenda team requests.
Yeah, that's fine.
At which time, I'm sure that'll move forward, Ms. Fronmeyer. Further remonstrances, responses? Then I'll just reiterate what I said earlier. Dave Fronmeyer was one of a tiny handful of the truly great Oregonians. He not only taught Commissioner Lichen and taught me, I don't know of anybody who didn't look to him for guidance, whether it was when he was a president at the University of Oregon, when he was attorney general, or during his days in the legislature, or just as a dude walking down the street. I mean, he was truly one of the great Oregonians. My greatest memory of him is when Oregon beat Oklahoma in a very controversial referee decision. I was standing next to your dad and your mom, and, and I fell to the floor, and I wasn't looking around, but I think your dad did too. That was quite a, quite a moment. So, truly a man with great heart, great courage, great conviction, and one of the tiny handful of the truly great Oregonians. Thank you. And we'll move along. What we have before is a consent calendar. Today's consent calendar will be considered routine by the Board of Commissioners and enacted in one motion in the form listed below in our agenda. So, we have before us today's, February 14th consent. One moment, please.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Do you mind if we go back to emergency business?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, when we have these double meetings, I always often skip that. I apologize. Back to emergency business.
We do have the need for some emergency business. We're going to propose that you take it up at 1:30 this afternoon, and Mr. Dingell can share that with you.
It's just a, I was just, just before I came down here, I was advised by Ms. Betch Hart that in the process of, you remember trying to futz with the caption for the jail levy ballot measure to insert the word treatment or treatment services, somehow the five-year period got dropped from it. So it, by law, the measure has to say how long the levy will run, and so somewhere in that process, four or five years got dropped. So I've reworked the question so that it's exactly 20 words, and it has all those things in it, but I'd just like to, we'll just run that by you, and it'll be very quick. And I literally had not had a chance to call the sheriff and talk to him about it yet. I had to come down here for this.
Then we'll be reconvening at 1:30 this afternoon. A couple of your items that were for this morning will probably be pushed to this afternoon also. So it'll probably follow, add that to the conclusion of regular business this afternoon as an item, it's going to be item 13, excuse me, item, it'll slip it as item 13. Okay, any questions on that? Very good. Then we have before us the consent calendar for February 14th. Commissioner Bozovich.
So I'd like to move approval of the February 14, 2017 consent calendar.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. Seeing here in none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. County administration, Mr. Mokrheyski.
Mr. Chair, I'll forego my announcements. There's time at the end of the meeting, but I don't have anything critical, so just in the interest of time, we can move past that.
Then we have 11 o'clock time certain upstairs, so about three minutes till 11, we'll need to conclude these items. We'll move along with item 7A, announcements from county council?
No announcements.
And item 7B is order 170214-09, matter of incorporating Oregon statutory and case line to the lane manual. Mr. Dingell.
And I believe I can do this in the requisite period of time. You'll recall that on a number of occasions, we've recently, it's come before the board that because of the way that our code and our manual have been drafted, they have not been specific about what, when they incorporate a provision of Oregon law, what version of that law we're incorporating. And so essentially what I've done here is, and you know, we are involved in a comprehensive review of the code and manual. At the current time, we're trying to pick those out where we want to refer to a specific version of the statute. When that's the case, it will appear in parentheticals after the ORS site. On other occasions, we clearly want to incorporate ongoing Oregon law on the matter. For example, there are many references in the code and manual to, the meetings will be conducted according to the provisions of the Oregon Public Meetings Law, you know, records will be provided pursuant to the Oregon Public Records Act. In those instances, it's my belief that the board is intending to incorporate not only it's the ongoing version of the statute, including subsequent amendments and court decisions, and in the case of some statutes, administrative rules. As I say in my memo, the board cannot just indefinitely delegate its legislative authority to another body, so this, what this will become after we get, as we work through it, will become an annual order where each year the board will incorporate those administrative rule changes, court decisions, and statutory amendments that are in those provisions that you, that the board intends go on with the law. For example, when I use the Oregon Public Meetings Law, where it's referenced in the manual, we don't intend to freeze it with the year. We intend it to be the one that is in existence at the time that it's being applied, and of course, all of the court decisions. So that's all these two board orders are intended to do, one for the manual and one for the code.
Thank you, Mr. Dingell. We'll take them one at a time. Discussion questions for Mr. Dingell. Then we do have before us order 170214-09. Do I have a motion?
Move approval of the order.
Second.
Moved in second, those in favor, please say aye. Excuse me, discussion to the motion. Seeing here in none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now we have before us order 170214-10, in the matter of incorporating Oregon statutory, et cetera. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move approval order 170214-10.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. Seeing, hearing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. Item 8, A and B, commissioner's business. Without objection, I'll move that to this afternoon following the conclusion of regular business. At this time, then, we're going to move into executive session. We will recess from executive session and reconvene in regular session at 1:30. The Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purpose listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. We reserve the right to come back into public session should the need arise. We will adjourn, we will recess and reconvene in executive.